I know, I'm gonna give up on the jokes, though. Yeah, I'm not doing jokes. Good start. Good evening, everyone. We are calling the October seventeenth Committee of the Whole Meeting to order. So just as a refresher that in this term of council, we are rotating through our counselors to host the or to chair the different Committee of the Whole Meetings. And as I understand it, this is my last chance to practice for a couple of months, so so far so good. So the meeting's been called to order at five thirty. We're moving on next to the adoption of the agenda. So who would like to move the adoption of the agenda? Counselor Reed?
I would like to move the adoption agenda as presented.
All in favor? It's passed unanimously. And it's also nice that we have this worked out to a T. The adoption of the previous minutes, who would like to move the adoption of the previous minutes? Counselor Flowers?
I will move to adopt the minutes of the October third, twenty twenty-two Committee of the Whole Meeting.
Excellent, thank you very much. All in favor? Passed unanimously. Alright, and moving on to the one of the fun parts of the meeting, on to delegations. I would like to call up Bike Cochrane. Mr. Pearl, do you have anybody else joining you?
I'll be presenting myself.
Excellent. Welcome.
Sound check?
You're good.
Okay. It's nice having small, small chambers. Okay, good evening. My name's Paul Perot, I'm our Director of Operations, I'm also our Trails Director and I'm the Chair of our Active Transportation Committee for Bike Cochrane. Thank you for the opportunity tonight to share our vision with with council tonight. We are proud of what we've accomplished so far as Bike Cochrane, but we wouldn't be standing in front of you tonight without the tremendous support of both Town Council and Administration. Our mission encompasses transportation, recreation, and competition, three areas we grew in for twenty twenty-two. Tonight I'll walk through our growth and progress as a nonprofit, along with highlighting the status of our programs with the town. I'll show a few of the family-focused programs, then move into trails and close with active transportation updates. You can also see some of these photos in the year-end review books that we've brought with us as a gift to council tonight. A few very important notes from twenty twenty-two is that we basically doubled our paid membership to Bike Cochrane and now sit at over seven hundred members, which is over two percent of the population of Cochrane and is one of the largest membership-driven nonprofits in Cochrane. It's also important to note that we doubled our corporate members to twenty, which shows the strength of our grassroots support in the community, along with seeing that we're resonating with both businesses and residents. It's worth noting again here that we're one hundred percent volunteer-driven, and that's the only way that we're able to achieve our goals. Before getting into the programs, though, I wanted to highlight a shift in our membership structure that we made consciously as Bike Cochrane. By focusing on more family-friendly events and programming, we have shifted our membership base from being eighty-two percent individual members and is now seventy-five percent family members. That's worth repeating. In twenty twenty-two, seventy-five percent of Bike Cochrane's memberships were family members. One of the programs we'd wanted to do for years was a kids' bike camp where they learn skills and confidence in handling a bike. We couldn't host this program a few years ago from an insurance standpoint because we didn't have legal, official biking trails. This year, we hosted the camp at our Buffalo Bean Private Trails that we collaborated with the Cochrane and District Ag Society to complete, and you can see the smiles here from all the kids in the program. Happy kids riding bikes and riding with their friends make for stronger lifelong bikers. This year, we were able to grow to thirty-two kids and hope to expand that next year. Another program we added this year was our first bike race, again focused on kids. We had over one hundred participants, including kids on strider bikes and toddler bikes, many of them racing for the first time. This event brought our Bike Cochrane community together after years of being apart. Each racer received a custom medal, a bike cookie that Ryan Hopping's mom made, and a bag of candy. The last programs I wanted to highlight here are our successful group bike rides, where we've hosted road biking groups, gravel biking groups, downhill mountain biking, Learn to Mountain Bike, family barbecue and bike nights at our Buffalo Bean Trails, and our newest program, which was a ladies' mountain bike ride night and a Learn to Mountain Bike together. These group rides allow us to build community, along with offering new residents of Cochrane a chance to build their biking friends in town. We've also been hosting Bike Valet events in conjunction with Big Hill Cycle, which allows event organizers to reduce the amount of vehicle parking they need to operate, but also permits families to ride their bikes to fun events in town like Canada Day and Food Fest, without having to worry about where to put their bikes while they participate. Moving from programming to trails, it's important to highlight what we're trying to accomplish in Cochrane's trail system in conjunction with the town. It's our goal that all residents in Cochrane can ride, walk, or run a natural trail without needing a car. We make the distinction between a trail as being a dirt surface and a pathway as being paved. So even though we're involved in the Great Trail Program, for instance, with Cochrane Rotary, we'd consider that program a pathway program, even though it's called Great Trail, but just a distinction. As we improve our trail system, we're helping not just mountain bikers who want to avoid driving to Brad Creek or Canmore, but also walkers, trail runners, and dog walkers who want to recreate near their homes. Let's look at the progress we've made in trails in the last eighteen months. When we began our trail mission, there were zero legal bike trails in Cochrane. This meant it was impossible to host bike events like our Angry Hawks Enduro, or bring groups like Shred Sisters from Canmore, who've been asking for years to be able to do events here in Cochrane. We'd conclude in twenty twenty-one that zero percent of Cochranites can ride a legal trail close to home that year. As we've worked through twenty twenty-two, we've legally opened and managed six trails in Sunset and the Cochrane Ranch, along with our own Buffalo Bean Trail at the Cochrane and District Ag Society, and we've also just opened a legal trail on Mount St. Francis's private land along Big Hill Creek. By working with the town along with private landowners, we've added seventeen kilometers of legal, sustainable trails in Cochrane and allowed residents in Sunset, Cochrane Heights, Heritage Hills, and Heartland be able to ride a trail closer to their home. In summary, in October twenty twenty-two, almost forty percent of our town's population can ride a trail close to home, something that is a huge source of pride for our trails crew and for Bike Cochrane. As we move into twenty twenty-three, we're going to extend our trail building and maintenance program into the south of Cochrane to offer more recreational trails to more people in the communities where they live. The goal for us is to open trails to over seventy percent of Cochrane residents in twenty twenty-three. We have other thoughts on how to connect the rest of Cochrane to trails, and that mission is also connected through our active transportation vision, which I'll discuss shortly. But if kids can safely bike to a trailhead from their home, the trails may not have to be right in their neighborhood, but they're now still accessible to those people. So looking back to twenty twenty-two, along with ahead to twenty twenty-three, this is a summary of our workflow, but also the projects we're working on for twenty twenty-three. I do want to highlight the opening of our first kids' micro bike park at Riverfront Park and want to individually thank Angie Bashaw, our Community Parks Liaison, for her role in making this park a reality. I was just there yesterday with my five and eight-year-old, and in the hour that we were there with friends, I counted fifty-six kids using that bike park. I also spoke to a number of the parents there, and they said that this park has changed their weekend plans, as they now bike with their twin three-year-olds every Sunday because they all want to go bike to the bike park. I also want to highlight the fact that our trails crew of seventy-six people is entirely volunteer-driven, and that's the only thing that's allowing us to expand our projects. I'll touch on budgets and what it takes to achieve our goals at the end of this talk, but I wanted to share a brief look at the projects we're continuing to work on with this council's support for next year. As I mentioned in trails, being able to recreate on a bike is one focus for Bike Cochrane, but being able to use two wheels for transportation is our other focus. It's our goal that any child in any community should be able to safely wheel or walk to any school in Cochrane. We're definitely not there yet, but it's useful to note the challenges that exist in our town in the form of our topography and hills, the Bow River that bisects our town, the CP Rail Main Line, and two major highways. While these are challenges, these are not insurmountable. And we look to our neighbors to the west in Canmore, who recently received a silver medal from bike-friendly communities, and we know that it's possible. Because we have a number of engineers on our Active Transportation Committee, we focus on being data-driven to make better decisions around where to prioritize our advocacy and data collection. Focusing on schools and school-aged children is strategic, in that all infrastructure that helps our smallest cyclists also helps seniors on e-bikes, people on mobility scooters and wheelchairs, along with kids on scooters, and tourists and campers on rental bikes. This is a quick look at where our pathways are in Cochrane in twenty twenty-two. The orange marks out the last of our red shale pathways that this council voted to prioritize upgrading in this spring's application to the Active Transportation Fund, and we eagerly await that grant announcement. It's also useful to take a community and a school focus as we look at connectivity infrastructure between communities and between schools. Reading this council's strategic plan, it's also clear that our priorities overlap with your priorities, as your third foundational goal is all around connecting our built environment. Bike Cochrane sees a unique time for Cochrane and our pathway network in twenty twenty-three, as our goals are perfectly aligned with council and administration, and we need to strike while the iron is hot and start putting a five- and ten-year plan together for investing in both expanding and maintaining our active transportation network. Through those objectives, Bike Cochrane did a gap analysis on how to connect neighborhoods and bring our community up to the aspirations this council has. The result was the connectivity implantation plan shown on this slide. The Bike Cochrane Active Transportation Committee, in consultation with town staff, worked to do a first-level scope and costing effort so that there was better information to share with the town. This led to the first three projects listed being selected by council to seek funding. Again, our mission is that all kids can wheel and walk to school wherever they live in our town, and these projects will help us get there. While the Connecting Cochrane Plan, the twenty-twelve Bike Network Plan, and our recently-done Corridors Plan are really pretty documents, before getting projects into line items on our capital budget, they need a first-level scope and costing, which is what Bike Cochrane's Active Transportation Committee volunteered to do and has assisted the town to get there. Our first three projects here were the ones that this council selected for funding because the first-level analysis was already complete and the benefits per resident were the highest with these projects. In addition to focusing on the built infrastructure, Bike Cochrane has also partnered with our twelve schools in Cochrane for bike-to-school events, and we've given out over one thousand bike bells to kids to add to their bikes. This helps improve the safety of our multimodal pathways and also instills a sense of responsibility into these young cyclists that were all on our pathways together. To continue our data-driven approach for active transportation planning and advocacy, we are proposing adding a second bike counter to the two optical, one bike and one camera counter that we use today. We're also going to focus on a similar gap and connectivity analysis of our downtown core to better understand how to move bikes and people in and out of our core without cars as we bring in the new transit hub and look at how people want to access this space. We're also working on a bike parking for businesses pamphlet to offer to bike-friendly businesses. Ideally, a community will have programs to help pay for new bike parking. Canmore, for instance, pays half of any business's costs towards bike toolstands, bike parking, or bike improvements, along with refunding half of residents' costs for studded tires to help them bike through the winter. We hope to be able to highlight bike parking options, along with possible grant opportunities to help businesses with the costs of the infrastructure. For example, this summer, we lent out one of our Bike Valet parking stands to Rocky View Tap Room to trial out that style of parking as they opened their patio. A last note here from the Active Transportation Committee is that we hope to partner with the town and Active Transportation, Alberta Transportation, to start a Safe Bike Routes signage program, something that Drew Heinman has been encouraging us to work on for years. Now that Highway one A is being upgraded for cars, it's far less safe for bikes to be on it, and we believe the timing is right to inform and highlight safe cycling routes in and out of our town from our provincial highways. Okay, a quick look at numbers and data, since that's what gets us excited at Bike Cochrane, as well as bikes. We try to keep track of our volunteer hours for a couple of reasons. One is that many grants allow us to use those volunteer hours for a fifty-fifty program matching. Another reason, and this is something we've learned from Garmin, if you don't track something, it doesn't exist. This helps us highlight where and how we're spending our most valuable resource in Bike Cochrane, which is our volunteers' time. The biggest single chunk of that time, as you see in blue, is in trails at almost forty percent of our time. And with a total stock of hours now above two thousand hours this year, we are investing in our community, our trails, and our families, and we hope to continue with the help of town administration and council to continue our contributions into the future. In twenty twenty-one, we used a small fifteen thousand dollar budget to purchase two optical counters that have been placed on trails and pathways in twenty twenty-two, along with sending four of our trails crew to chainsaw courses for safely clearing dead fall off of our trails. We also signed and mapped six trails in the Ranch and Sunset areas that have improved the experiences for all Cochrane residents. We bought some trail trimmers and equipment and paid for the wood used in the Riverfront Micro Bike Park. We're proposing in twenty twenty-three to spend the same amount on trails, with the biggest chunks of budget going to a trails consultant to help us plan out new trails in Cochrane, along with continuing to sign and map those new trails, and also pay for mechanized trail building to speed up the process of building trails. We plan to purchase a second bike counter that we use in active transportation planning, along with having the town pay a small portion of our corporate and general insurance for Bike Cochrane, since Bike Cochrane actually carries the liability insurance on a per-kilometer basis on town trails today, along with paying for insurance on our publicly accessible Launchpad Bike Park. We're very proud of the progress Bike Cochrane has made in growing our trails from zero kilometers to seventeen kilometers of actively managed trails in twenty twenty-two. We're growing up as a community, and our Active Transportation Committee is supporting that vision. We're building a cycling community through our family-focused events, and we're supported at the grassroots level by our family and corporate members. In closing, Bike Cochrane wants to thank Jeff Janung, Mike Dericott, and Drew Heinman for supporting the vision of Bike Cochrane, Angie Bashaw for supporting the Riverfront Bike Park, Lisa Allman for believing in the relationship and working through the hurdles of organizational limitations, Devin LaFlesh for an amazing grant application to the Active Transportation Fund and supporting the community activities we do, Mitch Hamm for continued partnership and working together, and to Stacy Lowe for executive leadership support of making Cochrane more bike-friendly. Thank you for your time, and we'll take questions from council now.
Thank you, Mr. Pearl, for your presentation. It's it's so great to see all of your accomplishments in even just one year. As I'd mentioned earlier, I follow a lot of your updates on Instagram, and you know, I always see the great work your group is seeing, and and I really like the book that you've pulled together to share with your supporters. So just as a start, I wanted to thank you for all your great work, but it looks like our council is ready to ask you a few questions. So we'll start with Counselor Reed.
Thank you. Wow, you've come a long way, Paul, since the last time we were together. Congratulations to you and the and the group, the club. I have several questions, but the first one that comes to mind is I had an opportunity to read about the Active Transportation Fund, and now begin to realize just how extensive it is, like four million, four million dollars over five years of federal funds is a lot of, a lot of money. Fifty, fifty thousand of which you can use for planning. I was wondering, have you got, have we, or we collectively, the town and and Bike Cochrane tapped into that fund, and are we continuing to make application to it?
So there are opportunities to submit later applications. This particular funding tranche is closed, and I can't speak to whether or not any of that funding's been offered yet. I'd probably have to defer to somebody in the town administration, possibly Mitch or Mike, because it was submitted on behalf of the town.
If I could, I can confirm that the town did put forward an application for both the fifty thousand dollar, hundred percent funding for the Active Transportation Fund. We were successful in that application. You will see that coming forward at some point. It's to do a review of our multimodal traffic bylaw in the community. And then, as previously noted, we are awaiting confirmation on receipt of the Active Transportation Fund for the completion of the remaining shale pathways in Cochrane.
Okay, yeah, because it reads as if that Active Transportation Fund could be used for things like Horse Creek Park for our pathway system in town. I mean, just the infrastructure alone is phenomenal, but I'll leave that aside, that's in a discussion another time. And do you, have you guys achieved a nonprofit status, or are you seeking that, or is there value in that? I mean, just from my own experience, a little bit of experience in that area, I think there would maybe value for your club to consider that.
Sure, thanks for the question, Counselor Reed. So we are a registered nonprofit. We have been for the last four years, and we continue to hold nonprofit status. We are not a registered charity. We have looked into going that route. There's tax obligations that come along with that, along with pretty heavy reporting, and at this point, it doesn't fulfill the mission we're trying to achieve in terms of making the town more bike-friendly. So at this point, the nonprofit status we hold as a society is the correct one, we think, for our organization.
For now, okay. If I had just a couple more questions. So is Bike Cochrane an inclusive club?
Of course, I mean, we'd include anybody who chooses to take out a membership. I'm not sure I understand the direction of the question.
Just like I'm reading an article in the newspaper about the Buffalo Bean Network, it sounds like that's an exclusive trail just to club members, it's not for citizens of Cochrane, that you have to be a member of the club.
Yeah, that's an excellent point, Counselor Reed. So when we began work with Cochrane District Ag Society, who owns that land, and we came to them with a proposal to build bike trails and running trails there, it was their, it was what they wanted, to keep that trail a members-only trail, and it's still our mission at some point to make that trail publicly available, but it is the landholders' it's their land, and that's what they've chosen to do, is to have it be a members-only trail.
Okay, cool. I guess the last couple of questions I had were around the active fund, but that's more for administration then. But look, thank you, you guys have done a great job. I'm just blown away by where you were from where we, was it a year ago? Like, like, I think it was a year ago this month, this meeting that we were elected or re-elected. And it seemed to me that it was around that time that you had done your last presentation. So congratulations to you and your colleagues.
Thank you. Yeah, we're, again, we're a four-year-old nonprofit that we started in twenty eighteen. We've, we've come a long way, and we're very proud of the progress we've made this year.
Right, Counselor Fedeko.
Thank you for all the information. I have to say, you're one of the most organized nonprofit groups that sometimes come forward and provide us with data, which doesn't surprise me. I think you guys have been like this since the get-go, when you started, and maybe some of that does come from Garmin of encouraging you to use data instead of, you know, made-up facts to bring forward. I really only have a couple of questions. Are some of the new trails that you're proposing for twenty twenty-three, what is the synergy between working with the town on these proposed projects, or are they a crossover? Are you talking about new trail networks specifically that Bike Cochrane is bringing forward?
Sure, thanks for the question, Counselor Fedeko. So what we're proposing for twenty twenty-three is continuing to expand the trails that we have at Buffalo Bean, continuing to work with private landowners, but also continuing to work with the town. So the proposed trails that we're working on with administration right now are on the south side of Cochrane, some of which are already, we'd consider socialized or road trails, and it's simply a case of bringing those up to an insurable standard. In other cases, we're actively looking at new areas for trail development, again, to continue towards the goal of making those trails accessible to more people within the public. So it is our intention to be working in both areas. If, you know, if we're able to make everything open to the public, that's obviously where we want to go, but some of the private landowners we work with, that's not the direction they want to go.
And some of the questions that I have are maybe more towards administration in the idea that we know that we still have a number of trails that need to be connected, fixed, repaired. I've always questioned, you know, what is the average willing Cochrane citizen willing to pay to advance some of these projects a little quicker? We do understand there are budget implications, so I'm not suggesting that we go full guns out there and tell every Cochrane resident that this is what we're looking for, but have you ever done any research as to what it would take each resident of Cochrane to be able to amplify, move forward, and just get the stuff done? Because the thing that I always hear as a counselor is that it's great, you guys have these plans, but it seems to take years, or sometimes things get shelved. And we understand that's sitting in our roles, because there's only so many dollars in that pot, but if, as Cochrane, if we all sat together, what does that look like to make things happen and connect our community?
Sure, I think that's a great question, and it's a, it's a question that I think a lot of communities look at and try to solve various ways. The approach that we've taken, or that we've looked at with the town of Cochrane has been, well, you know, let's take what we've got and see how quickly we can move forward on our own. You know, we've looked at the trails and the beautiful topography we have, and let's try to take advantage of what we've got and bring it up to a certain insurable standard, and then see, okay, well, what's left and what else can we do? Within the International Mountain Bike Alliance Canada that we're a part of, we've been connected with a few mentor clubs. One of the clubs that we've been really privileged of working with is called the Six Seventy Collective out of Medicine Hat, and I cite that example because of what you said in terms of how fast can you move. So the Six Seventy Collective approached the City of Medicine Hat and said, we'd like to build trails together, we'd like to open up what you have. City of Medicine Hat said, that's great, let's talk about it. Four years later, they were still talking, and in that time, the Six Seventy Collective built trails in Red Cliff, a surrounding town, as well as in Elk Water Provincial Park. City of Medicine Hat looked at that and said, this is amazing, we want to do this all over the place. And they said, sure, you can absolutely do it, but at this point, to get the scale and to do it as fast as you want, you'll have to do it to pay a private trail contractor, which they did, to the tune of about two and a half million dollars. So the City of Medicine Hat has gone from zero kilometers of legal trail to about fifty kilometers of brand-new trail that they've built but paid contractors to build, and there's a whole network of companies that we work with who have that capacity to do, paying people to operate excavators and skid steers and bing bang boom, you've got an amazing trail network. I don't necessarily think that that's the way we want to go right away in Cochrane, but if this council said, we really want to move very quickly, we can absolutely look at scoping, what does it look like to build a whole bunch of brand-new trails in Cochrane? I feel like at this point, where we are in our trails development, we'd probably have another one to two years of bringing up what we have to a certain standard, improving in different areas, and then we could consider looking at a master trails vision for longer term and see, you know, Horse Creek Trails, Sports Park's a great example, where we've looked at potentially doing trails there, where are other areas we could work? We're also working outside of Cochrane with other counties that have open land that they'd like us to do work together. So long-winded way of answering, you know, I think there's a lot of things we can do, at what pace is always a budgetary dependency. And it's just, how fast do you want to move? We're happy to move as fast as this council's ready to, but in the spirit of what we've been working with town administration, we've planned on a non-professional trail development and using our volunteer trail crew to bring the trails up that we have and to also improve the trails and build new ones.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's something that I'd be kind of curious maybe to get some feedback from administration about, you know, what their thoughts on this, or maybe, you know, something that we could bring up further in discussion, because I definitely see the potential, I mean, especially with a whole different kind of demographic of people moving here, from especially from B.C., from Ontario, that would probably enjoy biking and cycling and just connectivity in very different ways than sometimes maybe what we've even thought about it traditionally from the Cochrane sense, and I, and I don't think that's something to be ignored. I think that if we're going to be a standout community, this might be one area in which we, we choose to invest in, but again, I realize that it's got budgetary, you know, consequences to that, and not everybody's going to support it, but, you know, we all, we all should be probably a little bit more active than what we, what we are. So I applaud your group for doing the good work that you have been doing. So continue on.
Thank you, Counselor Fedeko. If I can just add just a couple of thoughts to that, you know, we look at examples of towns like Bentonville, Arkansas, and Boulder, Colorado, as towns that have said, we want to be an economic draw by our trail systems. There's huge economic benefit if that's the direction the town wants to go. I would also highlight your example of people moving here. More than half of our trails crew has moved here in the last couple of years, and a good portion of them have moved from Ontario, have moved from Canmore, and have moved from B.C. And in interviewing and talking to them before they've joined our trails crew, a lot of what they've said is they've either been priced out of Canmore, priced out of B.C. areas, they cashed out of Ontario, and they said, we want to be active. And we live in a destination community. This is a lifestyle community that we're really thankful to be a part of, but because of that, I think the expectations on this community and our infrastructure are changing. You know, people move here and they expect a fully connected network, they expect to be able to bike around and go anywhere they can, they expect to be able to go to trails that they don't have to drive to, and I think we're just starting to recognize that And I think we're just starting to recognize that we can actually grow up to that aspiration, and we want to be a part of helping that.
Excellent. Thank you, Councilor Fedeko. Councilor Flowers.
That was an excellent presentation. Thank you. And thank you to you and all your group for the many hours of hard work and the progress that you've made. It's amazing. One question I had was, you kept mentioning to make the trails legal. What does it take to make a trail legal?
Sure, that's an excellent question. One thing is simply having the municipality acknowledge that it is a trail. There is a certain expectation when you do have a trail that's acknowledged. It needs to be signed and mapped. But it also needs to be applied for through the Historical Resource Impact Assessment Group, through environmental groups within Alberta, within the province of Alberta. And so in order to make a trail legal, you need to make sure that you're not violating some other issues. So for instance, the land we sit on at the ranch is historic land. And because of that, for us to build a trail here, historic resource folks tell us we can't use machines, for instance. And we can't add new trails. You know, those were, those are restrictions that come from the Alberta government. And we can't simply just make a trail anywhere we want. We have to go through the appropriate process to do that. Another thing is the Big Hill Creek follows under the Water Act, because it is a Class B water source. And so because of that, if we're going to do any work within or in and around the Big Hill Creek, we've got to follow a very set and restricted list of what we can do, when we can do it. And if we're going to, you know, fix a bridge or add a bridge, there's very specific things we've got to be careful as we work through that. Those are some of the things that come into having a legal trail and then having it be part of the town's network.
Thanks. There's a lot to it. So it's great how many kids are getting involved and to see them out active. What about seniors? Do you have any programs in electric bikes?
That's a great question. We've been reaching out to seniors on the bow. And we've actually, we did a speaker series last year with our members, just coming out of COVID. We still couldn't meet. We did some virtual. In March this year, we started doing live speaker series again. And it looks like we're going to be working with seniors on the bow to do a speaker series on e-bikes at Seniors on the Bow in conjunction with Big Hills Cycle to help share information, help them understand, you know, what's a Level 1 versus a Level 2 e-bike? Where can I use this? What's the legality? But also simply help them understand that we, as Bike Cochrane, are a, you know, bike society for everybody. And if there are specific needs they have, whether it's, you know, they'd like to have maps that have larger print, or, you know, if there's other things that we can do to help on mobility scooters, we'd love to understand that. So, yeah, we're happy to work with anybody who wants to help make the town more bike-friendly, and seniors are no different.
Excellent. Have you heard about the tri-sha bikes that they got at the Big Hill Lodge in Bethany?
Yeah, they're fantastic. Devin had shared those with us. We'd seen them being used in other communities. I think that's such a phenomenal way to allow people to get outside. One of our members, a previous councillor here, is visually impaired and not able to bike. But he reached out through the membership and said, if anybody is interested in being a bike captain with him, and I had the pleasure of riding with councillor Watson, I was able to go tandem biking with him so that I could steer and he could come along and enjoy the feeling of the wind. And so through Bike Cochrane, we've been able to give him about 10 bike captains this year. And we hope to be able to expand that next year.
Excellent work. Thanks again for all you've done.
Yeah, Councilor Wilson.
Thank you. Thank you, Paul, for the presentation. As you were mentioning, your group started in 2018, I think I heard, which was fortuitous for us in a way, too. Where I remember this council getting elected, a lot of talk originally was about the way that we wanted to improve our transportation network in Cochrane, not just roads, but multimodal or pathways. And having a group like yours to work alongside us has been just, you know, extra wind in the sails. We appreciate what you're doing. I wanted to ask a couple of questions about, one was about the legal trail question that councillor Flowers had. That was interesting. When you said 17 kilometers of actively managed trails, that doesn't include Town of Cochrane trails? That's actually new trails you've taken on, or I didn't understand?
No, 17 kilometers does include the six trails we're actively managing in Sunset and Ranch here in Town of Cochrane. It also includes our Buffalo Bean Trails at the Cochrane District Ag Society. And it also includes the trails we're managing on Mount St. Francis's private land.
Oh, okay. Great. That in particular, that portion was news to me tonight about the Mount St. Francis Trail. Is that another membership-only trail, and how do you access that?
Yeah, so that's been a long project we've been working on with Mount St. Francis Retreat Center. That's a private piece of land that a lot of people have been taking advantage of over the years. And they're a wonderful organization that the Retreat Center didn't want to ban people. They didn't want to fence it. They were really close to fencing it a couple of years ago, and we started talking with them. And we said, we believe that the right way to work together, if you're open to working with us, is to educate the public in terms of what you'd like to have on your land and close certain areas. They run silent retreats on their land. And so one of the things that matters to them a lot is keeping that space silent. So they've had issues with off-leash dogs. They've had issues with people with loud music. And so we worked with Trail Forks and Strava, two online app services, to remove trails from the middle of their land so that there was no information getting out there saying, hey, come ride this trail, it's great, whatever. So we got those trails removed and then began to work with them on what could publicly accessible use of your private land look like. And it's not obviously just for bikers. We've had trail counters in that space. And we're somewhere between 10:1 and 15:1 foot traffic versus bikes. So it's very heavily pedestrian. But because we were able to work with them, we got their trailhead improved. It's much more accessible now. You used to have to climb over rocks and stuff to get into there while you were trespassing. We got it, now it's actually signed. We've got maps that are coming out as well. You access it right at the end of the Cochrane Ranch Trails, right where your new Fourth Avenue Bridge is. And that area is a stunning, beautiful part of Rocky View County. It's actually not Town of Cochrane, but it is publicly open. And with their permission, we have opened that trail to our whole community. And we think it's a really special place with the caveats that they wanted in terms of keeping that place silent.
Excellent. A lot of that is news to me. That's fantastic. Thank you so much. One, my main question here was regarding funding and how we're positioned upcoming. I know that it seems around our table, funding is becoming more and more difficult to achieve. We've got some bad provincial MSI news recently. And it seems to me that some of the funding that we're chasing increasingly is not just given to you. We have to apply for, and that's definitely the way with the federal, the ATF fund, if I have that right? Just a question about how we're positioned upcoming for the next set of tranches, I think you called them. And anything we can do around the table to make that, put us in better position for those?
Sure. That's a great question, Councilor Wilson. The Active Transportation Fund, when you see numbers like $400 million over five years, you think, wow, that's a big chunk of money. We'd sure like part of that. You've got to realize, over 3,000 communities across Canada think exactly the same thing. And we think there may be some amount left over after they've completed their first tranche, but they might completely sell out, right? And so from that standpoint, I wouldn't say we're banking on being able to go back to that body. But anytime you can find 50% matching funding is phenomenal, right? So we'd obviously chase that. You know, we had met with that federal body, you know, a year and a half before they actually opened that. So I think we were in as good a place as we could be in terms of applying for the right size for our community. You know, I know Canmore applied for multiples, millions of dollars. City of Calgary was over 40, right? So, you know, it's hard to say how that specific body will come up. But what we would say, learning through that process, working with Devon, working with town administration here, they love data, you know, just as much as we do. And so anything we can do in terms of adding counters, adding the ability to count and understand people using our connected pathway system is huge, right? And whether that looks like, you know, adding more data at your new station, at the transit hub, or whether it's using the counters that we've been putting online, that's only going to help your application look stronger. So those are things they care a lot about, is being able to put a metric around, how much does this money improve your community? How much does this improve whatever their targets were? In Active Transportation Fund, they were very concerned about, you know, getting more people outside, about getting people, you know, using less carbon-intensive modes of transportation. You know, so those were the metrics that we tried to target based on the data sets that we had. So I'd say what we've learned from that is gather more data, right? If you don't have data, it doesn't exist.
Great. Well, thank you so much for the presentation, as councillor McFadden or Fedeko. Fedeko said, remarkably well-run group. I'm so pleased every time we get to see a presentation from you. Thank you for all the metrics and the data you are collecting. I think it's very helpful to all the things we're trying to achieve. We have a great synergy, and thanks for the presentation.
You continue to inspire questions. Councilor Reed?
Just a question and a comment. So the comment was, you know, to the point that Patrick just made. I mean, you guys are a classic example of what a nonprofit volunteer group can do, right? You know, my experience is that when government gets in the way, it actually gets in the way. And so, you know, we're better to support and lend support to you as much as we can as opposed to getting in the way. My experience is that when, when, you're medicine hat example, it becomes way more costly. And it also, if I'm correct on that one, it also went over time. Like there was a prescribed period of time they were going to do it in, and they were way over, not only over budget, but they were way over time. So I think volunteer groups, you know, like yours are just a classic example of the way things are, should be in communities. The question I had was, I had an opportunity with a lunch over today to kind of go over your website, which is really impressive by as well. Why not have a graduated membership fee as opposed to an annual membership fee?
Describe that a bit further. How do you mean graduated?
So a graduated one would, rather than paying $40 for the year, you'd pay $40 or $20 for half a year, or something like that. I'm just thinking about, you know, to Susan's point, there are some seniors that are snowboards in our community. There are others that may not necessarily, well, $40 doesn't seem a lot to a lot of people. Might be a little too much, but if they had, you know, could buy a membership for half a year or part of a year, that might be something to consider in terms of boosting your membership. And not that I know that it's a deterrent. I don't. But I think it might be something to consider.
I think it's a good question. And one of the things we looked at when we launched our Enduro Bike Race this year for kids was exactly that, is that they might be a seven-year-old whose parents don't bike. And they'll say, well, I don't need a family membership, but my kid wants to race this race. Well, you know, don't stop me from racing. And we said, well, how do we make it easier? So we offered a youth membership only for an under 18. They don't have voting rights at our annual general meeting, but they don't tend to care, right? So we tried to make that a more, you know, available option for them. If that is something that we wanted to look at, we've tried to see, you know, is there, do we need to have a seniors raid? Is that something that would help them? I mean, from that standpoint, we'd say, like, we are representing a lot of people across Cochrane who aren't just our paid membership. Everything that we're doing on trails is helping lots of people who never even hear about Bike Cochrane, and similarly on pathways. So, you know, I wouldn't necessarily say that we're actively trying to find ways of, how can we quadruple or triple our membership? It's less that, and it's more, you know, how can we connect with people who have transportation and recreation needs? And how can we help them? That's probably a bigger thing for us than selling memberships. We also make money through grants. We also make money selling merchandise. We also make money working with our corporate sponsors. So, you know, for us, that's not the only source of revenue for us. And to be fair, it's a bigger issue for us to be able to say that we speak for a larger membership than it is to say that, you know, that honestly, a good chunk of our membership dues is paying our insurance, right? And so from that standpoint, we have to supplement it with all other methods of bringing money in anyway. So if there was a community need and they wanted to be members and it was, our $40 annual membership was a hurdle, we should talk through that.
Yeah, maybe something if you're visiting with the seniors on the bow, just raising him, but, yeah, just a thought. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Janong.
Yeah, thank you. I don't have a lot to add, and I don't have any questions other than maybe with my coffee with the seniors tomorrow, I can bring up some Bike Cochrane initiatives. Councilor Reed actually stole some of my thunder here. I was going to say, what a great example of, A, organization, you know, a non-for-profit, government getting out of the way. I literally had this all written down. I won't repeat it. But, so great comments, Councilor Reed. One of the things that I keyed on, Paul, in your presentation was, and I know this group is aware of it, and it's why it's one of our pillars of our strategic plan and priorities. As you've outlined, that a bikeable, walkable, connected community is not only good for the citizens of our community, and whether they bike, run, walk, whatever, it's also an attractant to those appropriate, I guess, businesses that we're trying to attract to this community, to the industry that we're trying to promote. So there's really a double, like a two-forked approach here, pronged approach, that I think Bike Cochrane is really helping us with. So thank you for that. And the other thing, I just want to say, thank you for sharing such a good news story. And without getting into a whole lot of negativity, I'll stop at that. It's nice to hear something that's nice to hear around this table especially. And thank you to you and your organization for helping, contributing positively to our community.
Thank you, Mayor Janong. If I can just add one comment around what you were saying in terms of helping, you know, other, whether it's new businesses or other people considering moving here. Two of our corporate sponsors this year are commercial land developers. And they've looked at what we're doing and said, you are actively making our job easier to sell houses in this town. And so as we look at projects like that and say, okay, well, we can help you improve your bikeability metric or improve your trails in your area. You know, it is actively helping, you know, both business in terms of bringing, you know, the right people into business side, but also new residents coming in. So I appreciate the fact that you picked that as well.
Yeah, thank you. Just a few final comments. My colleagues have exhausted their questions. I only have one question for you, and it was kind of discussed slightly. I mean, we're seeing the advent of e-bikes really picking up. Is that changing your approach to your active transportation, or how is that, how are you adapting to meet that new need?
Fantastic question, very timely, councillor McFadden. So we're absolutely seeing a huge surge in e-bike purchases. Yeah, two of our main sponsors, the two bike shops in town, the three bike shops in town have all said the same thing. Their numbers of e-bikes have gone through the roof. If we look at Europe as a predictor of what we're going to see here, most bike shops in Europe see more than 50% of their bikes go out the door being electric. And so I'd say there's two sides of that. One, from an active transportation standpoint, that's fantastic. What that does in a community like ours is it flattens the hills and makes everything closer. So City of Calgary is now something you can commute to, especially when the great trail is done. And you'll be able to get there in a much easier way than you'd even be able to drive. And there's no part of Cochrane that's inaccessible on an e-bike. And it's interesting, as we've been spending time on trails and pathways, seeing the number of 60- to 80-year-old people who have said, my e-bike has opened the door for me to come back and re-love biking. And that's now their major mode of transportation. You know, they've added baskets on the back. They do their groceries that way. So e-bikes from an active transportation standpoint are fantastic. On the recreation front, we are absolutely seeing e-bikes showing up on trails as well. It's been a bigger issue, I'd say, in Canmore and West Bragg, where there's larger trail networks. One of the reasons people buy electric trail bikes or electric mountain bikes is to get deeper into where they might want to go, or again, to potentially flatten some of the hills. One of the negatives of e-bikes and trails is, has been, you know, people are concerned, are you doing more damage to the trail network? Are you doing more ecological damage? Most of the research we're following isn't seeing that. A lot of the research coming out of national parks in the States isn't seeing that. I know it was very contentious when national parks in Banff opened some of their trails to e-bikes. We'd make the distinction between Class 1, which is pedal assist, and Class 2, which isn't. Class 2 is legally registered and managed as a moped, as a scooter. It's a bike. It's a motorcycle. But Class 1 pedal assist, we, as Bike Cochrane, don't really see an issue with having them on trails, and they're legally permitted here.
Excellent. Yeah, your entire presentation has been data-filled, and I've learned so much. And it's just been great to watch, as my colleagues have identified, how you've helped us as a community become, you know, more of that destination, more of a lifestyle community, which we've all, I mean, it's why so many of us moved here in the first place. But it just keeps getting better, and it's great that Bike Cochrane has been part of that solution and part of that story. And so I thank you to your group, and I see a couple of your colleagues joining to back you up. And so to pass on that, thanks for that. And of course, also making it, removing my legal trespassing activities and making that legal. I appreciate that. So, but yeah, thank you very much for your presentation and all of your great work, and we look forward to seeing you again. Okay, council, we are now moving on to item 5A. This is the seniors' property tax support program. I understand Ms. Lowe is going to be presenting to us tonight.
Good evening, Deputy Mayor, Mayor, and Council. Unfortunately, Mr. Hammond was not able to join us this evening, so I am stepping in to discuss with you the seniors' property tax support program. You may recall that in June and July, the item was discussed by council with respect to the program, what the impact was, whether or not we should be considering an increase to the program or expansion. And the request was to bring back recommendations to council before budgets are considered. Just as some history, the program itself was initiated in 2006 with the amounts increased in 2016 and 2018 for eligible property owners. A support program currently is offered to those who are 60 years of age or older. They own their property and live in it. And applicants are determined, their eligibility is determined by their income and based on whether or not they're a single-income home or double. Over the past five years, we have seen a steady increase in the number of seniors qualifying to... to access this program, and specifically between two thousand and twenty-one and two thousand and twenty-two, we have seen over a fifty percent increase in the number of seniors accessing it. So, as we know that this continues, the program continues to grow, and the number of seniors looking for that program continues to increase, it is important that we evaluate the program to determine whether or not the original intent is meeting, whether or not the program is meeting the original intent, and/or whether or not there are changes that need to be made, given how long it's been in effect, and whether or not it's actually addressing the needs that we're seeing in our community. So, one of the things that we are going to be doing, and you will see note of this in your proposed two thousand and twenty-three draft budget, is that this program is being relocated from the Tax and Assessment Department over to the FCSS team. From there, we are proposing that comprehensive review be done prior to administration making recommendations to Council. So, that review will include program outcomes to determine if the original goals, as I said, are being met, best practices, whether or not the program is the most impactful method of supporting low-income seniors to maintain their personal housing, financial eligibility to determine whether or not the, the financial eligibility criteria we're using right now is appropriate, or whether or not that needs to be changed or assessed. Age eligibility, we know that our program right now provides access five years at an age five years younger than the provincial program. And then the financial rebate, whether or not that rebate that we're offering is appropriate, effective, and/or if those dollars being assigned solely to this program are better used in other programs and/or some form of blend. So, it is our intention that a full report on the program, how it's being accessed, and what administration believes are appropriate recommendations, will be presented to Council in September of two thousand and twenty-three. Our intention for the year, the budget year for two thousand and twenty-three, you will see in the draft budget, is that that program be maintained as it currently exists right now, and that no significant changes be made until such time as we've had an opportunity to evaluate whether or not it's effective, and whether or not there is opportunities to either expand or amend it.
All right.
So, sorry. So, with that, I am open to questions, and this report is just for Council's information this evening.
All right, yes, thank you. Ms. Lowe is going to say this, as I understand, this is a follow-up to Council Flowers' initiatives and questions, but our first question of the evening goes to Council Reed.
Yeah, thank you for the report. Just wanted to say two things. One was, I, I really appreciate the criteria that's outlined. I think that that will give Council the kind of information it needs to be able to make a informed decision moving forward. And then the, the last thing I wanted to say was the under-financial implications. So, if I understood it correctly, then the, the last sentence in that paragraph, the FSC resources administer the program and conduct a review, be supported through FC annual budget, and will not result in any increases to be undertaken this year. Being increases, does that mean increases for their staff to be able to do this, or is it in reference to the dollar amount for the program?
So, currently, the program is actually underbudgeted, and so, it's over, it's accessed more than the amount that's been contained in the operating budget. We are correcting that this year with a reserve draw as well, but the, the intention of that sentence was exactly that, that we are not adding resources or personnel to be able to manage the program and/or do the review of whether or not we're effective and what the recommendations might be coming forward.
Yeah. The other thing I was wondering in terms of the program criteria was, one of the, I don't know, one of the objectives or priorities of Council has been that it, it wanted to cut back on red tape. Will that be part of that, the administration of that program, to look to reduce that? I'm assuming so, given if they're not, not going to need any additional resources.
Yeah, absolutely. Council Reed, I think the intention certainly is to make it as easy as possible to administrate and not make it so onerous that it becomes inaccessible, both for the public and for the community to continue to offer that program. It's not intended to make it more complicated, and potentially, one of the things that they will be looking at is whether or not it should be more closely aligned with the criteria that the province uses. That way, we're not creating our own and consistently having to evaluate how effective or appropriate they might be. That being said, obviously, what's experienced in Cochrane might be different than other areas of the province, but that's absolutely something that will be looked at.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Council Reed, Mayor Janong. Sorry, Council Flowers, I was looking.
Thank you. Good information. It's more complicated than I first thought, but our community's growing like crazy. We have more seniors, and so, I'm not surprised there's more seniors signing up for it. I think it's timely with us working on the age-friendly stuff to gather all this information and see if it is the best way to help and how else we could be helping. So, thank you, I look forward to the results.
Mayor Janong.
Yeah, not much to add. I agree. I very much appreciate the approach taken by administration. Not surprised, as we dig into something like this, more questions arise and more details need to be flushed out. So, totally agree with the approach and the direction. Only question is, I wasn't sure in your response, in two thousand and twenty-three, are we adjusting to what we're actually spending in two thousand and twenty-two?
That's correct.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate the presentation.
Council Fedaco.
I guess with that, do we anticipate an increase again in two thousand and twenty-three moving forward to two thousand and twenty-four and onwards? Or are we kind of thinking that we're adjusting enough at this point, that we're not going to have to adjust it again, you know, say, in the following year?
I think the intention is to set the budget right now with what we know, and then have the comprehensive review and that detail and information options brought back to Council in September, so we can make sure that whatever program changes, or whether it's increases or a change to how the program is applied, or, like I said, the opportunity to split those resources and use them in other areas that might have more impact for some. All of that will be part of that report to Council in September, with the intention that then there would be a budget consideration for Council to make in their two thousand and twenty-four and on budgets.
Looks like that's it for questions. I just wanted to say that, for myself, I really appreciate this deliberate review of being clear of, you know, what we're trying to accomplish and what's the best way to accomplish that. So, I really appreciate the deliberate approach to that, and of course, you know, those seniors in our community that are in need, we do need to find a way to support that, and if this is the current best tool, that's great, but I appreciate, again, that we're going to find the best tool to support those seniors in need. So, I look forward to the report, I guess, in a year.
Excellent, thank you.
Okay, Council, moving on to item 5B, Economic Development Business License Bylaw with Mr. Corman.
Good evening, Deputy Mayor, Mr. Mayor, Council. I wanted to bring you an economic development update. Haven't been, haven't been here since, well, for a long time with an update, so. Can't seem to count, but I also have a slight by, a business license bylaw amendment that we'd like to talk about, get your feedback on. Currently this year, we've had an increase in business licenses. We've had over a hundred net new businesses come into town. Those are home-based, as well as retail, as well as non-residential, some industrial as well. We see an increased amount of inquiries over the summertime, three to four calls a week with new businesses, people wanting to look at different office spaces, different development opportunities, brownfield as well as new, and we're seeing some of the, some of the more vacant properties looked at along Railway Street, which is wonderful. So, we may see some opportunity there for new development. We have more retail land coming from Greystone fairly quickly, so that's more, more coming in the future, which is great, and it's been a very, very hopeful and very prosperous, I think, year for development within town. We are currently working on the new, fourth year of the Gift Guide. We have over eighty businesses that want to be involved in the Gift Guide for Christmas, and we are actually doing the photo shoots for those retail stores with their items at the station this week coming up. As well, with, with that, we have the Broadband Beeper Program coming very quickly to the business community. We are going to start promoting that, and I know we've been delinquent on this program, but it's never too late to start that Broadband Beeper Program. As well, we just received the keys from the construction group, so Economic Development has control of the building, as it were. We had IT in there this morning and this afternoon diligently putting in technology, and we are working to, with finance, to get ready for opening of formal operations sometime later next month. We have to test the systems, we have to make sure everything is functional, but we are on our way to start that process. We are also working with Community Futures to look at a new Smart Start Program for two thousand and twenty-three, which will be the first programming of, that will happen at the station, but I will provide you more information at a later committee of the whole meeting in regards to our, our objectives there. This week is Small Business Week, and because we have access to the building, we've decided to utilize that building for Small Business Week. So, this Tuesday, tomorrow, if you're up for it, seven-thirty, Cochrane Business Network is doing some social media sessions in the station, where they're going to utilize the Information Center and do, host a breakfast meeting there. On Wednesday, we have, we have some marketing workshops happening, as well as Cochrane Tourism is doing a Visitor Economy Network Lunch, and then more workshops by the Entrepreneur School later in that afternoon on Wednesday. And then on Thursday, Cochrane Chamber is going to host a networking event from five to seven at the station, and showcase it to the business people, and let people have a little sneak peek from the business community beforehand. So, we're excited to see the station being utilized right out of the gate. Economic Development has also been working with physician recruitment, working with Intergovernmental Affairs Team. We did write a letter to AHS in support of a physician bringing five doctors from Great Britain over. What we do, we have now confirmed that unfortunately, AHS denied that claim, or denied the, the ability to bring them over, and it was due to the fact that they had multiple other submissions for physicians for Cochrane. And so, we are seeing an uptick in physician recruitment, and AHS is supporting some applications, but obviously not all. So, I will do my best to find out where those doctors are now and when they're coming, so we can bring back that information to you. As well, with tourism, we've been working on new funding models. We've been looking at a couple different opportunities, and I think if Council would like, we can bring those back to discuss them at a different committee of the whole meeting. As well, Tourism Alberta, or Travel Alberta, is actually starting their Tourism Destination Zones, and they are wanting to make Cochrane Zone Six, and I think this is really important and really a great opportunity for Cochrane. This zone basically is from Cochrane to Rocky Mountain House, and Cochrane would be the biggest city within that, or town within that, that area. And so, what are they trying to do with these Tourism Destination Zones? They're trying to actually make a measurable contribution to achieve a geographical and seasonal dispersion of tourism and sustainably leverage the natural assets of the place. They're trying to create significant product development in the industry in these areas, as well as develop a new experiences and attractions and accommodations and transportation solutions for this, for these specific areas. They have had preliminary meetings with, with, Travel Alberta has had preliminary meetings, and I'm looking forward to having more fulsome meetings with them in the future. So, that is the economic development update, and we also have for you a bylaw amendment for the Business License Bylaw. Based on the, the Land Use Bylaw changes that happened this year, when the new Land Use Bylaw came through, it was determined that short-term rentals were not being regulated as they should. And a short-term rental basically is classified as a, as a use of a residential property for temporary accommodation for thirty days or less for compensation in a dwelling unit or a portion of a dwelling unit. And typically, these are not where people live, they are houses that are vacant, and then people utilize them, or utilize certain rooms in them. So, what we found through the public engagement and through working with Cochrane Fire Services is that many of the short-term rentals, or Airbnbs as you were, don't meet regulations where they have very little egress or access, they don't have proper fire regulations as far as window size and basements, and we found, found as though that, in many cases, there was so much disruption in some areas where people would be coming in late at night, two or three in the morning, and they would have multiple cars throughout the residential areas because multiple spaces were being rented by multiple people in one house. So, we have no way to regulate this. So, we'd like to put that regulation in. So, the added regulations are, a fire inspection is required for all short-term rentals, the host cannot rent a room that does not have one or more egress windows, the host cannot allow more than two adults, not including minors, per room, the host cannot allow overlapping bookings of two or more bookings for dwelling, dwelling at the same time, cannot rent out the space, separate rooms to separate guests under separate reservations, but can rent out multiple rooms as a part of one guest reservation. A host must include the business license number in advertising for short-term rentals, and a host must post the name, number, and email of emergency contact who they can reach twenty-four, twenty-four hours a day. So, we wanted to bring this forward to you as a slight change of the Business License Bylaw, so we can regulate short-term rentals. It is a business that we would consider a home-based business, and that license would be applied to them, and then we can provide them with some regulations and make sure that they adhere to those. So, if you have any questions on our economic development initiatives, or tourism initiatives, or the Business License Bylaw, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Corman. It's a good thing we got an update, there's a lot to unpack there, on some dramatically different themes. So, but I'll turn it over to Council, Council Fedaco.
Thank you for the update. Definitely sparked a couple of questions for me. I know that on social media, we've been asked, "Do we know who is paying rent at the new station?" I, I've been asked that quite a few times, is, are different groups paying rent? Is it, is there, are they just offered space? I'm just kind of curious as to how to answer that question publicly.
No one is renting space at the moment. We haven't figured out all of the programming, we haven't discussed any models in that way. Economic Development will be in control of the space, and that space will, if, if programming comes from the community that they would like to utilize the space, then we would judge it on its merit based on the initiatives and the, and the objectives we're trying to achieve. So, currently, right now, no one is renting space at that station.
Okay, we'd definitely be curious as to what that looks like going forward, just because I can see that, again, adding conflict between many different user groups of people who might want to utilize the space, but then certain groups are able to use it, certain groups aren't, and I would rather, much rather see a paid component, even if it's small, it's just something that separates people from not paying or to paying, and us not picking or choosing as an entity, that's number one. Number two, definitely glad to hear something about the Airbnb aspect come forward. I mean, I've stayed in a variety of Airbnbs. I'm just curious as to how this is going to be monitored. I mean, so, I definitely understand the need for them to get a business license, blah, 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 but is somebody actually going to be going on to the Airbnb site to determine, you know, do they have their information properly posted, or is this, again, a complaint-driven process, which, I hate to say it, I think is going to be a hill of beans, and I don't think it's going to mean anything, unless we are actually actively checking in to make sure that these businesses actually are licensed if they're advertising on that site?
Yes, great question, and I, and so, our Business License Clerk, Patty Palmer, actively looks for businesses that do not have licenses, and she will be actively scouring that site, ensuring that everyone who is advertising there has a business license.
Perfect, good to, good to hear. As for now, I don't have any other questions, but thank you again for the update.
All right, Council Reed, over to you.
Yeah, I just wanted to pick up on a couple themes. Actually, the Deputy Mayor was right, I think this is an evening of, of good news, which is a change, a refreshing change, I should say. A two, two, well, one comment and one question. One was, I had an opportunity to go on the, the website, actually, I spent an hour on it. I just found it fascinating. I couldn't believe how much depth and information there was on that, so congratulations. I can see why new businesses would come to Cochrane based just on that website alone. So congratulations. I can see why new businesses would come to Cochrane based just on that website alone. It's excellent. My question was, when you presented in May, we talked about the mandatory tourism fee or the potential of a mandatory tourism fee. And and so I I'm kind of disappointed that we're now in October and we're still talking about that. I I would think that that would alleviate some of the major fundraising that you have to do and clearly offset the town's budget and contributions to economic development. So I would turn to administration or whoever is responsible for that. But I would hope that that model would come soon, come forward sooner than later, because I think it's really important in terms of moving forward. I think the economy is such that businesses and hotels in particular should be responsible for reaping the benefits of the work that you and and your colleagues are doing.
We will bring it to you as soon as we can.
Thank you.
Councilor Flowers.
Thank you. There was a lot of information there. I really liked the changes that you're talking about for the bylaw. Makes sense to me. I did think, though, that we'd always talked about renting out the the boardroom at the new station and renting into groups. So I just hate to see us being competition with other nonprofits that are renting out their boardrooms.
We we will, we will bring back a program that is fulsome, that will have every every opportunity for for you to vet out and and see what we're trying to achieve. Currently, right now, we can rent out the boardrooms to people who would like to utilize them. That's not a problem, but only during business hours, because we don't have the resources after hours at the moment. So but we we will try to utilize them as best we possibly can. But as I say, we will have the regulations, the the goals, the the process and the procedure to make sure everybody in the community knows how to how to become part of the part of the station.
Great, thank you. And a question about the broadband beepers. What is that program going to look like?
Basically, we are asking the community to, as we say, change over the squawking beepers to the broadband beepers. We're asking them to provide the with receipt that they bought the bought the broadband beeper, proof that they've actually installed it, and then we would reimburse them for that that broadband beeper.
Excellent.
Yeah.
Good to hear. And I just wondered if the pedestrian crossing is open yet?
Pedestrian crossing is active, but not open because they are still working on some of the monuments and wayfinding. So we want to make sure that those are ready to go. And we will open the crossing in coordination with the station being more ready for public use.
Thank you. And other physician recruitment. I wondered if it was possible for you to do a short presentation to the seniors advisory group. I'm the elected member on that group. And we've had a lot of discussions about the physicians. It would be really helpful if you could give an update.
I'd be happy to.
Thank you. I'll pass that along.
Excellent.
Thanks.
Yeah, there's a lot to unpack. Councilor Wilson?
Thank you. Congratulations on the if congratulations are in order for the station building. It looks certainly looks like a very well-done project, and I'm excited to see what kind of programming we can get going there. I know it's a it's a blank canvas right now, but it's exciting times to see what we do with that. The only question I had about your presentation was in the bylaw amendment on short-term rentals. Just hoping to get a better idea of what that looks like for the common person involved in a in a short-term rental. So just just very basic questions about if I'm if I own a property here in Cochrane and I'm renting it out currently on Airbnb, what what changes does this bylaw have for me directly?
It would be an $80 home-based business license. It would be a fire inspection ultimately to ensure that that and that would be a $50 fee to ensure that, you know, it's that the guests are safe when they're there and and that they're adhering to the to the regulations in that way.
And those are both annual costs, I expect, so pretty minor marginal fees we're talking about. Okay. And wondering if you had any any guess on how many residences are that currently affects in Cochrane? How many short-term rentals we have in town? Do you have any number there?
We've counted 58, I think, 58. Fifty-eight, 58 of them.
Interesting. Okay. Thank you. Well, thanks for the the update and look forward to our station tour whenever that should come. Thank you.
Mayor John, where do you?
Yeah, great segue, Councilor Wilson. I I looking forward to the opening of the station too at with our sneak peek through there the other day, whenever that was, week ago or so, feels like three. That building is incredible. Hats off to the team that put that together. Looking forward to doing that ribbon cutting and being open to the public so they can 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 start to see the vision of what, A, the function of the of the of the business side. But I'm really happy to hear that more work's being done on the the innovation side of that building as well. Because I I don't know if when way back in three, four years ago, when we started contemplating the idea of an innovation building, a center, if maybe I didn't do a very good job or we didn't do a very good job collectively of sharing the 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 vision with our community and residents and business community. Because when I start talking about, and this happened to me three days ago, someone was asking, well, what's the station going to be? And like, well, you can buy a bus pass there, you can catch a bus there, you can do town work there. You can virtually meet with maybe a planner or somebody from the town in a little booth in the back and do business opportunities there and visitor information. And they're like, oh, that makes sense. Oh, and connect with the other with the one side of the tracks to the other. Oh, that's cool. But what's the innovation side of it? Well, when I start to explain around an incubator, starting a new business and creating our own, the Cochrane would be investing in a site where we can create our own economy and have startups that start up in Cochrane, in our Innovation Center. People, the light bulb goes off, and they they get excited about that. And really? Cochrane's doing that? And it's not a new idea, but it feels like it's new to a lot of people that I talk to. So we have some work to do around sharing what the vision is there. So I look forward to hearing back about what that's going to look like. I hope it's steeped in incubator and startups and that we're really making the most and maximizing the room that we were able to afford to build, given all of the barriers with COVID and the initial vision that we went from to where we are today, that we're able to take this small space and really prove to the community that this is an awesome idea that is going to develop into something even bigger someday in the future. So hats off to the team. I think that building looks amazing. I can't wait to unveil it to the entire community. Thank you for your update.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. or thank you, Mayor John. Councilor Reed?
Sorry, just one last question. This actually had to do with the with the transit hub. There was at least one or two citizens have raised with me a concern about the library parking lot being used as a day parking lot for those that are taking the transit to the city. What what steps are we taking to prohibit that from occurring?
That's a really good question. I think that we will have to work with municipal enforcement to ensure that we have a plan for that. I think that some signage will have to go up to ensure that people understand that this is parking for the station and the library only. So we'll work with that and come back with a more complete answer for you.
So to the mayor's point, then, the the vision for the hub was not that that would, like, the additional parking space we put in there and the the upgrade in terms of the parking lot, all that stuff? That was not built for day parking for people who were traveling to the city, right?
That's correct. And with communications, we're working on ensuring that people understand what is functioning, what the functions are there, what where to park. We actually are also promoting that we have secured bike lockers in the back of the building for people who want to ride their bike down to the station, lock it up for the day with an app, which is fantastic, and then carry on their way to regional transit or or elsewhere. So we're going to promote all of those different modes of of getting there and ensure that that the the parking lot is utilized in the best way possible for the station and the library.
Yeah, I guess it's probably a flash of the blinding obvious, but that probably needs to happen sooner than later, right?
Where it's in the works, absolutely.
Thank you.
Great. That looks like it's the question from the the rest of council. Yeah, I'm really excited that we're we're at the point with the station and 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 if it's time to kind of renew that conversation around the fact that it's not just the station, it's also the innovation hub. And so I am looking forward to your update on the innovation program build-out. I know that's that's kind of part of it or will be part of it that we need to do quickly. I have also heard the concerns about the parking and and some confusions around there. So we'll have to work on the communication strategy and enforcement there. But overall, thank you for your update. There's a lot of good news to pull out of there. I mean, we've got 100 new businesses. That's to be celebrated always. And the keys to the station, which is is great, and the beginning of the celebration of Small Business Week. The only downside to that, of course, is that I committed to going to tomorrow's meeting, and it's at 7:30 in the morning.
We'll try to hurry it.
If you could. So but yeah, anyway, thank you. I think we're taking some great initiatives forward with Cochrane's economic development. So thank you for leading that. Councilor Fede.
Do we need to vote on the amended bylaw or not at this time?
I will come back to you next week as as a first reading and
Oh, yes, I guess it is Committee of the Hall. So yes, we don't
No voting.
Anyway, just jumping ahead of myself here.
No worries. You get to see me next week.
Perfect. Thank you.
Anyone else? Last last gasp, no? Last call? That's for later in the night. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Corbin. Thank you very much. So next up, we have Ms. Oh, dear, Ms. Anna Karakoko. Did I say it right? I wish I could take credit for that, but they spelled it out for me. And so this update is the six-month monitoring update on the land use bylaw.
All right. Good evening, Deputy Mayor, Mayor and Members of Council. This evening, I am here to present a six-month monitoring update for bylaw 01-2022, which is Cochrane's new land use bylaw and hopefully continuing on the good news train for the night. And so bylaw 01-2022 was approved by council on February 28th of this year, which commenced a review and monitoring program, which was to be reported back on at six-month and one-year marks. We are now at that six-month point. So the following presentation will outline the activities that have taken place since the bylaw was adopted between March and August of 2022. As you will probably remember, the LUB review project was divided into six phases, and we are now in Phase Six, which encompasses the implementation of the new document as well as monitoring the performance of the encompassed procedures and regulations. We wanted to begin by looking at the first half of Phase Six, which were the implementation activities that took place following adoption of the bylaw and included updating all town webpages, creating new fillable application forms, which you can see an example of on the screen, creating information sheets for common application types, updating the new public zoning GIS map, and updating the Let's Talk Cochrane LUB webpage. As mentioned, the second port portion of Phase Six is the bylaw monitoring program. We designed the monitoring program to respond to the project vision and goals, which guided the creation of the new land use bylaw, so we could track whether intended outcomes were achieved. The deliverables that we've been tracking as part of the monitoring program include permit application statistics and comments and concerns concerns received in relation to the bylaw. Overall, the feedback received has been positive and indicates that the majority of changes made have been implemented successfully. I'm sure you're sick of seeing this slide, but just as a reminder of what those project goals are, they included reducing red tape, aligning with existing policy, improving readability and online bylaw presence, modernizing regulations, and highlighting the importance of the historic downtown. So the first goal of red tape reduction was achieved in the new land use bylaw through changes to development authority and the role of CPC, streamlining development regulations and a new expedited approval process and change of tenancy process. So one of the major changes to bylaw 01-2022 was realigning the permit types being brought forward to CPC. And as you can see, between March to August of this year, compared to 2020 and 2021, there have been significantly less permit applications going forward to the commission, which has resulted in time savings for both applicants and administration. We continue to monitor applications as we receive them to ensure that the appropriate permit types are going in front of CPC. But so far, the changes have been successful and that we have reduced red tape while making sure that no applications have bypassed the proper process. We've also tracked the number and type of variances being applied for. As if there is one regulation consistently being applied for and approved, it is a signal to us that there may be problems with that specific regulation. As you can see, parking and rear setbacks for accessory buildings have been the most requested variances. All of the parking variances were quite minimal and in relation to unique site conditions or requests that weren't a product of the regulations in the bylaw themselves. And the rear setback is something that we have flagged for future amendments. Since bylaw adoption, we have also approved four expedited permits, which means that all of those applications did not have to wait the 21-day appeal period before beginning development, and none of those were appealed. And five change of tenancy approvals were issued for permitted uses moving into existing buildings, which avoided them having to go through the entire development permit process. So the second goal was aligning with existing policies. Most of the work pertaining to this goal was accomplished during the drafting of the land use bylaw. However, all permit applications continue to be reviewed against existing policy documents to ensure that 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 there is continued alignment. We also wanted to make note that there will be some anticipated changes to the land use bylaw with our when our new MDP is created and adopted to ensure that the bylaw is in line with that document as well. Another major goal of the bylaw rewrite was creating a more user-friendly and comprehensible document. Some of the things we've done post-bylaw adoption to achieve this goal include creating targeted information pages for some of our more application, more common application types, which are available on our webpage and are passed along to applicants. So everything is available to them on one or two pages instead of having to sift through the entire land use bylaw. We also have a new webpage to present all of our notices of decision, where previously those were only available in the newspaper, which creates more accessibility of information and also cuts timelines as we are able to post multiple times per week instead of just one newspaper ad. We also have a new interactive PDF version of the bylaw. This screenshot is showing one of the features, which allows you to hover over a defined term to see the definition rather than having to scroll through the entire document to see what it is. All of the comments that we've received so far indicate that all of the visual and procedural changes made to the bylaw have been really effective and that it is much easier to navigate and interpret than the previous document. The final goals of the bylaw review were modernizing regulations and highlighting the importance of the historic downtown. Most of these changes are things that will be seen long-term as more unique uses get applied for and more redevelopment takes place. So these are items that we're monitoring, but do not yet have information to report on. We hope to see positive changes with the new regulations for short-term rentals and the new Western Heritage Design Framework when those changes are made as well. The final piece of the modern monitoring process was tracking potential amendments to be made to the bylaw. We were going, we were aware going into this process that we were striving for progress, not perfection, and knew that there would be tweaks to be made. So we have been keeping an ongoing list of potential amendments to bring forward at the one-year mark. The majority of items tracked so far are smaller spelling or numbering changes. However, we have flagged some of the larger regulatory amendments at this point as well. None of the changes noted so far have been deemed necessary to amend immediately and are planned to be brought forward together at the one-year mark to ensure there is time to capture everything needed and avoid fragmented amendments. So to conclude, we just wanted to summarize some key findings noted thus far. The first is that the statistics demonstrate that new processes and implementation activities have reduced processing time for applicants and administration. Comments received from all stakeholders indicate that the new bylaw is easier to interpret and access for the average user. And amendments tracked show areas for improvement and clarification. So next steps, again, a one-year bylaw update will be brought forward in spring of 2023. And at that time, consequential amendments will also be brought forward. And then there will be continual continual monitoring at one-year increments for the life of the land for the life of the land use bylaw to ensure that everything is kept up. for the life of the land use, for the life of the land use bylaw to ensure that everything's kept up to date. That concludes my presentation, and I will now welcome any questions.
Thank you for a great update, and I think you fit well within the realm of a good news update, so, well done. Uh, Council Reed.
I was just picking up on that theme. I love the, that we're bookending this, uh, this, um, committee of the whole with such positive news tonight. Yeah, personally, it must be really rewarding for you professionally, I would think, and personally. Um, I mean, your love of labor, your labor of love in terms of getting this document to us, I know it took some time and it must be really rewarding, at least after six months, to see that it actually is of great benefit and really strategically supports what council has been saying, I would think, now for five years. Um, and so I, you know, kudos to you. Um, I had, that was my first comment. The second one was, you know, despite what were earlier concerns, or I might even say fears, about that expedited approval process, I mean, the experience of the first six months would suggest that it, uh, it's much to do about nothing, right? Um, and that it seems to be working and it ended achieving the goal that we wanted. Um, the one question I did have was the online, um, access that people have. Do you measure the usage of that, just out of curiosity? Like, do you know how many people are actually using that? And, I mean, aside from the fact that they find it useful, do you know how many people are using it? Is it, is it, like, what are the numbers like?
Um, through the Deputy Mayor to Councilor Reed, I don't personally have, um, those numbers. That's something that we can look into for, um, the next update. We have been, as a team, working as much as we can to pass along that information to, um, residents and when we receive any queries, um, to kind of promote usage of that as much as possible. Um, but yeah, that's something that I can make note of and.
Yeah, I'm just picking up on, uh, the Garmin, uh, by Cochrane theme of, of, of tracking stuff. I think it, it's worthwhile to be able to, to show the, the value of that in addition to everything else. But again, you know, I think professionally and personally, this must be really rewarding because it, to see this come to fruition, to know that council was fully supportive of that and, and, and clearly that was one of our mandated goals, uh, goes a long way, so thank you.
Thank you, uh, Council Flowers, over to you.
Thanks for the updates, I appreciate it. Um, you said that you flagged landscaping as one of the possible issues, is there any more information you can share about that?
Yeah, for sure, there is a little bit more of an explanation in your reports. Um, but essentially, the portion that we're looking at within those landscaping regs is the calculation for multi-unit dwellings. Um, so the regulation, uh, is a requirement of forty percent of the gross site area for a property be landscaped for multi-units. And that was carried over from the previous bylaw, as there were no issues noted, um, about it at that time. However, uh, we have been getting a lot of applications for multi-units, um, since the bylaw was approved in this year. And we have gotten multiple comments that that number is hard to reach onsite sometimes. So we're just looking, um, and putting some more thought into different approaches that can be made and, uh, crafting landscaping regulations that can take the site context into account and maybe prioritizing amenity space and attractive landscaping over just that hard number.
I understand. I hope we don't change it too much, I hate seeing them too close to the road or not enough.
No, for sure.
Grassy area, but, yeah, I could see that it would be a struggle. And you mentioned that there were some other concerns, but nothing else in sort of enough to be worried about? You're just tracking things and putting them in categories?
Exactly, yeah, yeah, there's nothing, uh, that's really functionally affected, um, the use of the land use bylaw. Um, again, that variance tracking has kind of give us, given us some insights, um, into future changes that might need to be made, but that process also is in place to respond to unique situations in which the regulations can be bent a bit.
So you track the complaints, if there's complaints about anything?
Yes, yeah.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Council Flowers, uh, Council Fideco.
Thank you for the update, I'm, I'm glad to hear that everything is kind of running as it should. I do have one quick question. Um, y- you said that there were some concerns about some zoning stuff, and so what I'm more concerned about, and I'm not going to bring up any specific example, but if, if an area, say, was, um, multi housing and all of a sudden, you know, people are assuming that it's one way and then it turns into a different way. Um, not with using any examples, but how are we kind of bringing forward some of those concerns that residents have, um, in particular areas? Is it something that is going to come forward to council? Is it something that is just looked at from an administration perspective? And then where is that gap of how we're making sure that if it is an administrative decision, how is that translated into council understanding what is exactly happening in those particular areas?
Right, that's a great question. So through Deputy Mayor to Councilor Fideco. Um, so any amendments, including land use amendments, will, um, come through council, so everything will need to be approved by council. Um, all of the zoning issues that we've noted so far are just smaller mapping issues that were carried over, um, through G I S. So an example is, we have some public utility lots that were zoned, um, R-one in the old mapping, and that just carried right over because we switched everything over to R L D. Um, it doesn't affect the functionality of the site at all because utilities can continue on that site. It's more of just a cleanup. Um, and then another example, there's some little fragments of land throughout town that didn't, uh, have assigned a zoning for whatever reason on the old G I S maps, and that also carried over. Um, there are like tiny slivers of land where nothing could be developed anyways, so again, it's not creating a functional issue, but it's just cleanup, um, in that regard that we've noted so far.
Council Wilson.
Thank you. Uh, thanks for the six-month update, and I really appreciate the focus that we keep seeing on process streamlines, on the, cutting the red tape, the, it looks, I, I like what we're doing here, it definitely seems like an improvement on where we came from. Uh, my two questions are, uh, probably both too preliminary to actually have an opinion on, but I'll throw them out as maybe, uh, maybe we can have a better conversation about them on our one-year update, but I expected when we did, when we did, uh, this bylaw update, the two areas that I saw, um, that I was, I don't know if I'm most concerned about, they're the most difficult to tackle, I'll say, and maybe we got them right, maybe we didn't. Our parking variances, and then our Western Heritage Design Framework for businesses that are applying for, uh, I guess on the outset of when, when they're making applications, uh, do we have any, do you have any updates there on how those two topics are doing, Joel, or is it just too, too early to tell, I expect?
Uh, yeah, that's something that we can provide more detail on at that one-year mark. Western Heritage, the new framework hasn't been implemented yet, um, so there's no information to track on that, uh, front yet, we're still using the old guidelines in all of our applications. Um, in terms of parking, we haven't seen that much that we're able to monitor yet. Um, there have been three non-residential applications that have used the new parking process. Um, and it's so far been successful in the application process in terms of working with applicants, um, to receive that rationale and work together to create a parking count. Uh, none of those, um, developments have begun yet, they've just gone through the permitting stage, so we don't have any on-the-ground information, but so far, it's been successful administratively.
Okay, great. Thank you, I guess I'm, I'm looking forward to the one-year update on, on those two topics especially, and it'll be interesting to see what, uh, our council's C P C reps say after the one-year process too, how, how there's, I know that's definitely somewhere where, where we see what's, what's going well and what's not going well, so. Look forward to that in the spring, thank you.
Uh, Mayor John.
Yeah, nothing really much more to add, other than, uh, I appreciate the metrics and the way that you've been tracking this, uh, gives us, um, though, uh, I'll speak for myself. It gives me the opportunity to see in real time, real, uh, experiences that people have interfacing with the document. And I think the biggest sign of success that, uh, many have outlined tonight is that the lack of feedback you're receiving is, for such a change in a document from what we had previously to what we are experiencing today, or have today, is, uh, is that, is the best metric, I think. Just that people have, that, that are using it, find it easy to use, or at least are getting through it. I think that for me, that was the biggest thing, for someone who wants to, that doesn't have an experience of a planner or even any experience as a counselor to, you know, or a member of council to interface with a document that many of us don't look at, maybe even, maybe just once in our life. To be able to get through that in an easy fashion and follow through and get your deck built, or your addition, or something that you're, you know, experiencing in your new business or property. Uh, these environments need to be easy to operate in, and the fact that we haven't heard that they're not, um, we gotta take that as a huge sign of success. So thank you to the entire planning team that had, uh, and to yourself, I think Council Reed said it well, that, uh, you gotta feel some, some good pride in this document, so thank you for your work.
Excellent, well, that looks like, uh, all the comments and questions from my colleagues. Um, just to echo, I think what you've heard is, um, this is really good work, and I know it's been a long time coming, and, um, and I really appreciate the one statement you made about, you know, progress, not perfection, and that the process has also been set up to do that continual feedback loop, so that we're continually learning. So, I think the process was set up well, and the work that your team delivered, um, has clearly worked out. So, uh, thank you very much for your work, and, um, I look forward to seeing the next piece, so thank you again.
Thank you.
So, Council, that takes us through our business items. Half tempted to say seventeen minutes again, but I want to suggest that we take a ten-minute break and then return for the in-camera items after that.
Motion, you go on camera?
Motion counted first? Okay, in that case. All in favor? Pass unanimously, ten minutes.
Seven eight.